Okay, everybody, welcome to today's joint city council public works meeting Tuesday, September 7th. I'm going to call it to order and turn it over to Mr. Viersma.
Okay, I'll call the meeting in order for the city public works commission. Our first item of business is to approve the minutes from the last meeting on August 2nd. Motion to approve the minutes from last month, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is Phil has an update on the projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did provide a report. The CAS 66 sanitary sewer extension stormwater, that improvement hearing is on September 22nd. That's a Wednesday night. That will be the second time we're in front of the residents to discuss this improvement. The assessment approach has changed slightly. We've kind of uniformly set the residential, the commercial rate, and we've talked in terms of the terms that we would provide as well as better defined what we saw was a sewer system that needed to be replaced based on age. So again, that will be on Wednesday night, the 22nd. The 2022 road improvements, I did put a few paragraphs here, but essentially we had that improvement hearing on August 25th. We had, I think I counted up 29 in attendance, 29 signatures plus staff. We did get a few comments before. We did have in that two written column petitions of people not in support of improvement or assessment. And then again, some comments about the properness or appropriateness of assessing versus general fund expenditure. But essentially, we're at the point where we've followed all of the processes associated with 429. I think we've had information meetings. I think everyone understands what the city's proposing and the associated costs. We're at the point of either the council saying proceed further and get the plans together and let's bid this and build it next year if the pricing comes in in a range where we accept it or not proceeding forward. This is a not, it is not a petition improvement, so you would need a super majority in the vote for that to be approved by the city council or forfeits. So, and then the RRFB installation, I think it's positive news in that we have a contractor that's been hired by the city at their special meeting on Friday. It's beach construction and they've indicated they will come in the week or sometime next week to do that work. And I understand Ted has everything else. So, that's my update. I'll answer any questions you have.
Phil, I got a question for you. The sewer project, what is the estimated cost for the project now?
Total project stormwater sanitary, 2.7 something million.
Is there any kind of breakdown for that?
Yeah, it's in the information I provided before. It's broken into stormwater sanitary, and then that's further broken into county cost, city cost, and then county, city grant cost.
The city sent a letter out this last week that it's 2.35 million.
Total project, all of the estimated construction cost and associated engineering.
Yep. That just kind of floored me, how it got from 1-2 last year to 2-3 this year, so.
1-2, and then that was only sanitary, didn't include the stormwater.
Yeah.
That is actually one of the aspects of this, that city, and a great point, glad you brought that up. We've seen nothing but an increase in pipe-related costs this year for construction. For example, simple buried sanitary sewer pipe now, whether this is related to supply chain issues, natural disasters, where they're refining for plastic products, whatever, but we just got a quote for the cost to put an 8-inch pipe in. It was only 14 feet deep. It was 75 bucks a foot, and previously probably played in the 35 to 40 bucks a foot. So, we're seeing material costs and some of these things skyrocket. Steel has always been up. This is some new stuff.
You're blaming that primarily on the cost of the pipe?
I'm not blaming it. I'm telling you what we're being told, that it is supply chain-related materials demands, things like that. And that's not uncommon to see ebbs and flows. Anytime there's a hurricane in the Gulf, we see, whether it's actual or whether it's opportunistic, we see some increases at times. I think you've seen it in Batumis, when the Bakens is going, and there's competition in the oil market, we might see better Batumis prices. So far, we haven't seen an increase in Batumis prices for paving, so to speak.
So where was that in the packet, in the council packet last month?
It was in the update.
Didn't see it.
It's in the update that was provided to the public works committee last month and approved at your council meeting the following week. It's the update to the feasibility report.
I just never saw those numbers.
I can probably pull it out of my stuff and get it to you if you want to see the breakout.
Yeah, I would really appreciate that.
So we're doing the storm sewer project and the sanitary sewer project together?
Consecu-, yep, simultaneously because they end up impacting each other.
So of the 2-3, how much grant money approximately is there going to offset?
There's $315,000 of Bowser grant to offset that.
End of story?
For the stormwater, yep, end of story. And then the county, we estimated that they're up near 400,000 in contribution.
So it's seven total?
Round numbers, I think.
Yeah. So that'll get it down to a million six or something to the city?
Yep. I have that information. We're talking rough numbers, and I, you do have that, but I'll definitely pull it out, and you can look at it.
I'd appreciate it.
So the county doesn't want to do the storm sewer project?
So what the county wants, no. So, we impact pretty significantly by putting this deep sanitary sewer pipe in. If you imagine, and I don't want to take you down a road you've already been, but our pipe starts 20 feet deep and gets up to 8 feet deep by the time we get to the car wash. So when we go through there, the sanitary sewer pipe is probably anywhere from 6 feet to 3 feet deep. So we dig way below it, and we end up having to basically disassemble it to get down to our pipe. In discussions with the county, that pipe was put in in 1978. It is concrete pipe, so it will last a long time, but they recognize that that pipe has ran a period of time already on it, and it probably should be replaced. So what the county is doing is saying that any piece of pipe that the city would impact with our sanitary sewer, they'll pay 50% of the costs associated with that. At least, this is not a formalized agreement. This is the agreement that they've sent, and I've copied Mike on how they laid out. So if you can imagine we interrupt, we have to disassemble a storm sewer pipe above our sanitary sewer pipe below, they'll pay 50% of the cost to put brand-new pipe back over the top. And then that will leave leads, if you will, that connect to those pipes. And those are still 1978-year vintage when they were put in, and the county doesn't want to leave a new segment, old segment in there. They'll pay 100% to replace those segments. And then there's some segments we added that have to get to the storm ponds, and those are considered to be under the combination of grant, city, and county, meaning the grant will cover up to 315,000, and above that, well, the city and the county are supposed to be matching the grant at 25%. So if you look at what, to take full advantage of that grant at 315, we'll have another 25% city and county that will be added on top of that. So that's another $70,000 roughly. So it's a combination of about 385,000 total grant, city, county contribution.
Is that the normal percentage?
That's what the Bowser, that's what this Bowser grant is, is a 25% match, and they'll grant up to 315,000.
But if we were not doing sanitary sewer, and the storm had to be replaced, would the county be picking it up?
Yeah, if we weren't impacting their pipe, and they decided they want to replace it, then they would replace it at 100%.
100%.
That's my understanding of it. They don't want to replace any of it, but since we're in there digging it up, they realize the time is right.
Do we have to carry the money for a while?
Correct. Under the, the way it's set up, the city would be carrying the cost, or the dollars that the county would be giving to this until 2024, 2024. We would be carrying that. The Bowser grant gets, I don't believe that, that gets cashed in once you get reimbursed on it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. The Bowser's not tied to a future date. It's get done, show you've done the work, and it comes in, I think.
Phil, I have a question.
Yep.
Like in Moonlight Bay, you can see the pipe that sticks out into the hill from the storm sewer that the county put in. Is part of the project to just plug those or to remove them?
So there are two, and actually, it's a good point, over at, in addition to taking a lot of the stormwater from the road and putting into these bio-retention areas for treatment before it flows back into the lake, the stuff across from Simonsen, so just to the south of Moonlight, and actually, that one at Moonlight, I believe, they get abandoned. We take those out, and the flow goes to the Simonsen stormwater pond. So we actually, that's a removed discharge point.
Phil, how about the one at O'Wadland? Because that should be impacted as well.
We, that one will be in overflow still, but the idea is the water will go through the water quality feature first, and then overflow out to the lake there. So it's treated. We do have a couple of discharge points that remain, but the water going out should be treated. Not like Ted's wastewater treatment plant, but the first flush being the pollutant goes into the retention area. Everything beyond that is supposedly already been rinsed and is cleaner and can get to the lake.
I got a question. Is the county paying part of that 25% match?
Yes.
Okay.
Splitting it with the city, as I understand it.
So the county paying for any curb and gutter?
They have some segments, that's why their cost, if you, back early on, I think we thought the county's cost, we first started this, was like 200 or 2 and 1/4. It's up till about 400,000, because in addition to the stuff we had identified, they have specific areas along the project segment that they want to replace some curb that wouldn't be impacted by our project.
Okay.
And they have some value gutter too they want to replace, and a couple, I think even a structure they wanted to outright replace, so. So I would say we have a, because the project hasn't stepped up to go forward, we have the framework for an agreement. We don't have signatures. We have a lot of dialogue correspondence between the assistant county engineer and us, and we copied Mike on that particular discussion.
Any more questions, Phil?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is making a recommendation to the city council for approving the resolution on the street improvements, resolution of improvement in the preparation of plans by Bolton, Bolton Meek. Any discussion on that? No discussion on the street improvements?
Doug, let me have a little bit of discussion on it. It seems to me that, I'm going to use Wildwood and Ranch for an example. Last year, we had a price of 180. The year before, it was like 110 to do that project, and now it's 215, or something, 205, or whatever it is, it's close to that. It seems like this pricing is going up by 50% each year, and it's kind of following through with the wastewater plant. Seems like it's following through with, so I want everybody to think about, you know, we've got five street projects, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Do we want to do them all this year? I mean, I'm going to think about it, and I'm going to do it, but if prices are inflated and high, and Phil just said that asphalt is not up, but just based on what all this pricing is, it seems to me that the projects are costing a lot more. So if we don't need to do one, maybe we shouldn't do it and do something else and get it paid for and come back, especially when all the people are coming in and saying, "We don't think the road's bad. We don't need to do it," which is certainly true on Whitefish Avenue. I believe even Birch and Arrows, you know, even that's the oldest road, but I just know, in my house, when the prices are the highest thing, I choose to not do very much stuff, and I'm going to wait and see if it turns down again. And it just seems to me that everything we're looking at here...
No, Whitefish seem to have more people against the assessment, which is related to an overlay. And I think that cost for that job to overlay was 400, 500,000. And the city could spend some money and seal coat it, do some patching and seal coat it. There'd be no assessments to the property owners, which would make them happy, I think, and give us a better road for five, 10 years. Without spending a lot of money.
Seven years, or whatever. But the road's not that terrible right now. There may be a few corrections, but in general, people are satisfied with that road. So I know it's a little late in the game. We're ready to put this out for bids, but it just, I just look at all this pricing, and it just seems to be kind of going out of control.
That's a good question of Phil. How is this being bid? Is one lump, or are the projects being separated out, and could we do a alternate deduct, alternate add to take out the overlay on Whitefish and instead do a seal coat?
So our initial thought was we would bid, we would bid this as one project, get unit costs for the various elements of it, because they would be very similar, and then apply those to each of the areas. You could bid the whole thing, and you could have language in there that just says the city, the city can modify the scope accordingly. The seal coating, the city wouldn't do on their own, I don't believe. I think you would partner with the county and kind of go with the county on that. So what I think you would be doing is reducing quantity for blacktop, or, yeah, in that case, the Batumis overlay is a Batumis quantity that you would be reducing. There are rules within MINDOT standards specification that if you reduce an item by, and I think we do a special provision on it, like 25%, so if you have 100 and you reduce it down to 50, you've changed kind of the size dramatically, where it's, the contractor, in all fairness, it might cost them differently. So you just would have to realize that if you pull that out, there might be an opportunity for a contractor to renegotiate a unit price on that. But that's how we, out of the gate. Now, again, we're not ready to bid. You're only up to the preliminary. We still have to put the plan together.
You'll come back with a new estimate.
We come back with a new estimate.
Based on what the bids have been lately, and who is up to date as you can.
Yeah, and honestly, you know, my first question is, do you intend to do these improvements? The design doesn't change. Your question's going to be whether the costs are going to increase. Well, you bid the project, and you know whether your numbers are within your level or not. You can always say, "We're not going to bid," or "We're not going to accept bids and reject them," hold the plans and rebid at a later year, whatever, but we're far away from bidding, you know. We do have a lot of good information, but we need to meet with property owners. On Whitefish, I had calls, many calls, from one individual wants me to talk to him about stormwater, and I said, "I'm not trying to blow you off, but until, until there's a direction by the city to go forward and do the plans, I'm kind of wasting your time and mine, so."
I guess when you bid it, you could have, each street could have its own bid schedule?
You could, yep.
That's what I used to do. Each street has its own bid schedule, and you could plug one off. If it's small enough, you could remove it, and if you go, cover the special provisions, you could have a right to do that.
Yep.
You can do that. It's not good to bid that way and pull something out of a contract like that.
Yeah.
You're going to bid it. You want to build it.
We could, we could do.
Unless the whole price is too high and reject the whole thing, come back next year, and try it again.
Yeah, we have those options.
I just don't want to wait till the 11th hour and express my personal feeling about it, but I just feel like things are getting expensive all the way across the board, and I don't know where the need is, you know? And we got to prioritize the need. Personally, I think the stormwater deal is more of a need that, you know, depending on how much we want to spend next year, but it's a lot of money.
When you say stormwater, you mean sewer and stormwater?
Sewer and stormwater, yeah. And I'm going to just share a little thought, why I think that's kind of a need is, I don't know if everybody's aware of this or not, but Moonlight Square would like to add a 5,000-foot addition on. They need the sewer to be able to do that. The lumberyard wants to tear it down and build a brand-new lumberyard there, and they need the sewer to do that. So there's a couple of projects that are going to add to the tax base, you know, it's going to improve things. So it's not just Moonlight Bay, you know, it's, there's more going on than just that. I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
So the city can choose to go forward how you want, whether you want to not do these improvements. What, what I would say is a bad decision is to do nothing, because I don't see construction costs getting less. And the whole purpose of doing some of these things is to, at least in the case of Whitefish Avenue, is to try and retain whatever pavement life has left. Not let the road go too far, where instead of spending $50 a foot, you're spending $85 or $100 a foot. That's the thing that I, my takeaway would be to public works and to the council is that if you choose to back away from doing these full-depth reclamation's that are, you know, essentially reconstruction light, or the Batumis overlay, I would still like you to put money towards prevention. Put more money into seal coat. Protect the pavement life you have out there. It's no different than your house or your roof. Do you wait until your roof shingles or your underlayment crumbles to make a fix? No, you get on top of it, because the fix at that point is way more than the preventative maintenance. So if there's a desire to step back and take a break, put dollars into seal coating, or slurry seals, or something to protect the stuff that isn't as old, so you get the maximum life out there. But stepping away and doing nothing, it could result in a short-term savings and more expenses down the road. And I think you know that. I mean, just like you said, in your own household, weigh what you can spend and what you shouldn't, so.
Phil, remind me when you and I looked at what the cost would be to seal coat Whitefish. Do you remember what that number was?
I think we said about $110,000 with the assumption, I mean, the seal coating is probably 60,000 to 70,000, but we kept in $20,000 for patching, another 10 or so thousand to do some ditching work along there, so.
So you have to also remember that we're not going to be paying out 2 million bucks in one year. We're going to have a bond payment, lumping all this stuff together, and interest rates today are still low. So, you know, you could come back and find that number to start climbing if you wait too long, so.
So the discussion actually should be whether the Whitefish Avenue should be chip sealed, or if it should be reconstructed?
Overlaid.
Overlaid, whatever, overlaid, I'm sorry, overlaid.
I think it's interesting, because I think actually, I think this discussion was more, "Don't assess us." It should be, it should be general fund, because I, it's interesting that the individual that contacted me is just a proponent of stormwater, and continues to tell me how the county screwed up and the road should be tipped, keep the water from going to the lake, but put it back into the bank. If I seal coat, I can't fix that. I, I don't know, maybe you know how to do that. I don't know how to seal coat and make, change the crown. I'm not even sure I can do it with an overlay, but I have a better chance with it. So I hear what you're saying, but I thought a lot of people were really wanted it to be a general fund versus more the improvement concern.
So they want a chip seal?
Yeah, because that fits in your policy.
They don't want to pay a $1,000 assessment fee.
Right, right.
I, I.
You know, I'd still go back to that $1,000. If you're paying it over 10 years, you know, you're getting, you're getting a good road for probably the next 20, 25 years by overlaying, and it's costing you 110 bucks a year for 10 years. I mean, when you look at it that way, the assessment argument, I just don't buy. You know, if we were talking, it was going to be $6,000 apiece over 10 years, yeah, then people would be screaming. I can't believe people are so wild over a $1,000 assessment to have a decent road, and you can pay it off over 10 years.
I don't understand why you're going 10 years, but whatever.
I mean, granted, you can go five or whatever.
Well, if the, if the chip seal's going to have it increase the life five years, that's what the assessment should be over, is five years, because they're going to get another one after five years.
Yeah, but I'm talking if we do the overlay. If it's a chip seal, then the general fund pays for it.
But even, even the overlay in, maybe in five years is going to be...
Isn't the overlay expected to last another 20, 25 years?
I think the overlay will last 15, 20 years.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I think you'll, you'll be able to chip seal on top of that. The, one of the things that, I really do think Whitefish Avenue is on that, that area, where it's just not so obvious. There isn't enough, like on Rushmore, where we're realigning an intersection where there's a, where you come up to the county road, where the T-intersection with the boulevard is kind of goofy, and we know that there's dips. I mean, that one just sort of, the right solution comes out to just full-depth reclamation when it's all said and done. Whitefish is in that different category. Where I came to the conclusion that I think we should be doing an overlay is, it's a 2-inch road, which in our area, 3 and 1/2 inch road gets us kind of a full constructed depth. Now, I know Doug and I have had these discussions, when he was city engineer in Anoka, right?
Coon Rapids.
Coon Rapids. He who had low residential, low-volume residential roads that were 2 inches, that's what they got to, 2 inches. So there's, there's not black and white crystal views on this, but when I look at Whitefish, if you seal coat it, you can save dollars now. You can. And I think you can patch it before, and you can make it go as long as you can, but even with the seal coat, I don't know if your life of the road extends much past 5 to 7 years. Now again, life of the road is dependent upon the eye of the beholder. If you're okay driving over bumps and cracks, maybe that's fine. But my point is, in 5 to 7 years, you're not doing an overlay at $50 a foot. You're doing a reclamation at $85 to $100 a foot. So, short-term, and maybe, you know, if you're along the lines of, "I'm selling that place in four years," this makes a ton of sense, but the cost is coming if the city intends to improve that in the future.
Tom, your point about people going wild over $1,000, I think part of it is because people, a lot of people on that road don't feel the need to replace the road right now. I think that's what starts it. They think, "They're going to the cabin, and let's find a road. There's nothing wrong with it."
I think you're exactly right.
But that's the point, is they're paying, that's what kind of bothers me a little bit, is that they're paying assessments on their main, on their, this is a second home for many of them, and they're paying assessments in their primary residence, and they're not complaining about that. But we as permanent residents, I mean, it's, this is really a tough decision for me. Certainly for me, it's, it's a difficult.
A lot of us have lived up here for quite a few years, and do we want all these roads to be like Anchor Point now? You know, I mean, that's, 25, 30 years ago, they were all gravel. We had the road grader going up and down the road all the time. Now they're all blacktop, but do we need them to be fresh and new? That's where, that's where a lot of that frustration comes from, is people just think, "They're fine. Don't touch them."
You know, and I looked at Whitefish, because this, we inherited this, and that's not that there's a bad decision, but I asked the question, "Why, why was Whitefish picked?" And then, when I've gone out and looked, there's a lot of houses along there. It gets, I, my assumption is, and part of it is, Crosslake is not a traditional lot-and-block city where you can identify the collector, and that's where, the roads meander and they go around places, but that's an area where there's a lot of density. And so I think it does get a lot of traffic, and I think that's probably why... and I think that's probably why it rose to your interest of replacing initially is there's a lot of traffic that goes on that road. So we should be trying to preserve that road by doing the overlay.
I've been driving that road for a lot of years and it's been kinda rough, like it is right now for a lot of years. It doesn't seem to be falling apart to me this year to next year or last year. There are spots, but I mean, it's not like we're gonna come to a point in time and it's gonna dissolve. I'm not of like, you know, it's not my expertise, but I've just been watching it over a lot of years and it doesn't seem to be changing. And that, I think, is what the people are, that's where the frustration comes in.
But I think that's kinda some of the... So when you view that the road is now getting bad, then it might be too late to do the lower cost.
I think the people, the general public are viewing this brand-new big city hall, the new fire, they're looking at all the money we're spending right now. That's where a lot of their frustration is. And so that's what my point is, is do we have to do that or should we pay down some of this stuff? Maybe do 10 roads one year instead of five, then we really get an economy of scale. And then we get a bond and we do a project. But there's just a lot of stuff, you know? A lot of stuff going on.
Mr. Mayor, we, we've gone down this road before where all of a sudden, some, we keep kicking the can down the road and eventually those 10 roads are 15 roads. And then we're trying to pick ketchup like we did before, and Tom can testify to this. And it takes every year of the levy going up to get, to get caught back up. And now we're to the point where our levy's finally getting about a zero, but we, we gotta, we gotta, you just can't not do nothing. You have to do something.
Well, I, I agree, but to what extent and how do we, that's, yeah. And I can't rub the glass wall any better than anybody can.
Our, our, our expert is our engineer. We've hired an expert, okay, our engineer. He's given us a recommendation that in his opinion, it needs to be maintained. Now, are we gonna go with what our expert is telling us? Are we gonna take and go off on our own? And, and that's what it comes down to, it's those two choices.
I, I mean, I'm here to give info and ultimately cities make decisions all the time for variety of reasons and that's completely fine.
We need to hear from these three.
Yeah.
Okay, we've had a lot of talk and now we'll be here for you guys to answer.
One thing I can say is that if you're looking at a resolution order in the project next week, when you order a project, your proposed assessments become pending assessments on a property. And if those people would sell their property before it gets built or assessed, they'd have to pay that assessment. It's over assessing Whitefish area or not assessing Whitefish area. Decision should be made before you order that job.
I agree.
It's kind of a legal thing where it becomes a pending assessment. It'll, it'll show up on their property that you have a pending there.
That won't show until when, '23?
Well, paying taxes, pending assessments would happen.
Till '23.
Could happen in '22 or '23.
Not, not until after the city.
We build in '22, by the next year it'd be on the taxes.
Yeah.
But if you order, if you order the project like next week, it's a pending assessment at that point. These people are liable for that, that assessment.
If the city goes, if the.
You can, you can fill the job if you wanted to and then it would not be pending anymore.
That's only if the city goes forward with it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But as soon as you order it, it becomes pending.
I'd go back to what both the Daves said. This Dave is talking about low interest rates, which makes sense. And what you started out talking about was how every year the price of these projects has gone up. So if we just kick the can down the road some more, you know, are the interest rates gonna be higher and is the cost gonna jump another?
That's right.
Just like it's been doing every year for the last three years, so.
What kind of cycle are we in? I mean, that's what we gotta try to figure out.
Now, if you didn't, if you didn't want to order the project at this time, you could, uh, have Phil go ahead and prepare the plans and specs. That's, you know, getting ahead a little bit, but at least you're making progress and he can update the assess, or the estimates and come back with that and then you could order the project.
Until we get the estimates back, that's gonna be when we pull the pin on it.
Right, you're, you're, you're.
Maybe you're right on.
This, this public hearing that we had is the, was the improvement hearing. It's to give this, the, the, really the mock assessment, the idea of what the pending assessment would be if the city goes forward, does this project, adopts the final assessment. For us as engineers, we can't go forward until we're ordered or given approval to go forward by the city.
And that's what this resolution is, to move it forward.
So I kinda look at it as, at my perspective is, if you approve this resolution, if the council approves this resolution, then we start preparing the final plans to get him in shape to bid if the city wants to go forward and bid him. And then that allows us to refine the engineering estimates. So I would say to you, it, it means we would start spending more of your money that you, we, you've already hired us to do, but we just never went to that next step. We only went toward, to the preliminary. So we'll be sending you invoices for some costs, so there's some cost. Then in January, if you get the plans, you get the cost estimates and you decide you're not ready to go forward, you will have incurred that cost. But not, but that, not, not the big cost. The plans are still good going forward. Your big cost is actually ordering the construction.
If, if we go, Phil, if we go forward and you come, come back with a proposal, then at that point in time, we could pick and choose?
We've already given you a proposal, so we, we could, we could do the design and you could decide how you wanted to do it. But I mean, I think the only one you're talking about is Whitefish Avenue, whether that's a seal coat or a Batumis overlay. So, I mean, we would want direction sooner than later on that. Do we put time into making it a Batumis overlay or do we put time into a seal coat?
Because we need to let the county know as soon as possible too if we're included in the project.
They're gonna wanna know in, by November, if we wanna partner with them on seal coating.
I, I kinda think, maybe Doug can comment, but I think our cities get big enough and their residents, if they're non-voting or not, they kind of expect things to be maintained here. And I think that for the last few years, we've included some money in our budget to do things like roads. And I think we, we have to continue doing that. I don't like to sit up here and see the engineer charge us all this stuff and then at the 12th hour, then we decide, ah, we're not gonna do it. And then we waste all that money and the time and all these meetings. You, you just have to do the maintenance, period.
I think we have to decide what we wanna do. I, I don't think you'll get a good bid. If you, if you put in the contract, you have the right to pull anything you want out of there.
I agree.
They're not going to, they're not going to bid. They're gonna bid high and then we're gonna be paying more because we haven't, we don't have the amount there. They, I guess, the big question, the big question is the Whitefish Avenue. And I think we should just decide either we're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it. One or the other and move forward and, and, and quit worrying about the assessments and stuff. Just do, make the right decision and move forward and have the project bid, order it. I just don't think you're gonna get a good bid if you're gonna put out a bid spec that says, "We have the right to pull anything we might out of there."
I don't.
Doesn't work that way.
Don't disagree with you at all, because I would be, where does a contractor put risk at? They throw money at risk.
So explain the, the water issue on Whitefish. If you do an overlay, can you deal with stormwater running off to the north instead of, or is that?
I have to, I, I think there's obvious areas where there, there's water running to the lake. I think at, at the deeded access or whatever to the lake, at John Forney's, apparently there's a stormwater issue, which Ted and I have a concept of how we could deal with that. At the Whitefish Trail, is that the one that goes down? Is it called Whitefish Trail that goes down to that area? I think water runs along there. I think there's something that could be done there to at least stop it. If it rains heavy enough, water's going to the lake. But if we can catch that initial stuff. I don't know about other areas. I'm surprised when I drive along there, there are a number of areas where, yes, towards the lake it drops off, but then when I look down further into someone's property, their homesite kinda comes up a little and there's kind of a nice bowl. And I'm of the believer that you knew what you bought. If your land was lower than the road, water's coming your way. We can't change that. But we can look for areas to get some of it. The overlay gives me a better chance to tip the road where it makes sense. The seal coat is, is basically painting the road, putting chip on it so it's rough. You're not gonna change water across the center line or anything there. We can try and talk to people, see if they're willing to let us do a little V-ditch in areas. As long as the V-ditch doesn't run into somebody's driveway, you know, or down into their garage, I think people are generally willing to work with you as long as you don't take trees. It's a lot to balance on that road. I mean, don't change the character of our road, but take care of the stormwater. Okay, I see how, do you see how we took care of stormwater on the end of Manhattan Point Boulevard? There's a big darn pond there. I mean, so, I don't know, getting off tangent here.
Okay, commission.
I guess I, I'd still, if they're screaming over a $1,000 one, if we don't, if we do the seal coat and in seven years we have to do a full-depth reclamation,
And that's 4,000.
Yeah, if you think they're screaming no, um, and it, I just think we ought to do it and do it right. And, you know, we're, we're kind of at that point where, you know, we've worked on the assessment policy for what, two years now? And we finally, this is the implementation of the, the assessment policy. Everyone is saying, well, in the past, in the past. You know, we gotta move forward in the future. We've got 55, 60 miles of roads that we gotta maintain and, you know, we need to have the assessment policy where, I think in Doug's email, you know, he was making the case that, um, you know, the NAGL, NAGL appraisal thing, there is a benefit to their, their property. They're getting a new, new road, you know, and, and they, they should pay a portion of it. And I think the city's at a point where you're talking tens of millions of dollars coming down the pike on these roads and the city's gonna need help financing those. And I think you gotta do it through assessments, even if, you know, they're minimal assessments, but everything is gonna help. Because there, there's a huge, huge cost coming down the road on these, on these roads. I don't know.
Is that motion now?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution and send it to the city council so they can make the final decision.
I'll second it.
So what was that again?
You don't have to put the, the last part of my thing in that motion. I make a motion we send this to the city council for consideration. Oh, okay. Not on how to handle Whitefish one way or another. I can look at Whitefish and say, you know, you could seal coat it last five years, seal coat it again, another $100,000 or whatever. You've spent half, you would spend to overlay it and eventually you get to 30 years, you're probably looking at a reconstruction anyhow. Different ways to look at it. And the road's not that bad of condition right now. I think a seal coat, like Ted had seal coated one street in there that we looked at it that one day this spring and looked pretty darn nice, seal coated. You've done, you've done a good job on, on, you know, crack filling and stuff like that, I mean.
Well, I can amend my motion that, um, Whitefish, we forward the, the resolution, but Whitefish, they consider a seal coat. If you think it'll last five to seven years and then, you know, the people have to, have to realize they may get another assessment and after my 33 years sitting in assessment hearings, they're gonna come right back and throw it in your face. You just assessed us five years ago.
But Tom, you're not gonna assess them with a seal coat, right?
Oh, yeah, that's right, okay.
They're not gonna get an assessment.
No, they're not gonna get an assessment this time, but their future assessment won't be.
$60,000, $70,000 compared to 450?
What's that?
It's 60 or 70 to seal coat it, is that true?
Yeah, but you'll do the patching ahead of time, so you should plan for a $110,000 project.
But it's 25% of what the.
Yep.
You can maybe do some drainage improvements if we just seal coat it. You can do some ditching or something.
We can try to do that, yeah.
If you put two inches on top of it, you still gotta get rid of the water someplace. If the road's gonna be two inches higher, it's gonna be a quarter inch higher or a half inch higher or whatever, so. That makes a big difference.
Just, and again, you, city can do whatever they want, but when it comes time to fix that road, you didn't reduce the cost that someone's gonna pay. So I won't be here, so we will.
Okay, so we, we have a motion to recommend the council that they adopt a resolution, order an improvement preparation of plans, which would include seal coating of the Whitefish area and no assessment to the Whitefish area at this time. That way it would not be a pending assessment. If you kept that in as an overlay, then you'd have a pending assessment on those properties and you'd have to remove it at some other time if you decided to change it later. Guess that's, that's the motion, right?
That's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Okay, the next item is a limited use agreement. Michael and Lisa Roca on Manhattan Point Boulevard. We really don't have any information on that. Maybe somebody can help?
Good afternoon, gentlemen, thank you. Kevin McCormick with Land Design Solution. Mr. Roca is here today as well. You may remember this one was on the ticket item for the potential road vacation of this area. As we all know, that's kind of been tabled till council establishes their criteria. Then the Rokas can make a decision whether they wanna move forward. That's not what we're here for today. We're here for to, uh, consider the use of this area to be paved. It's currently gravel at this particular time. It's been gravel for a very long period of time, over 40 years. I believe Mr. Roca will speak to that. From the endpoint of this, right now, we've got a, a little bit of a drop from the top area of the roadway down onto Man- Manhattan Beach Boulevard. It's about 12%. So what we're really asking for today is, under the limited use agreement, we understand the terms and conditions of it. We'd like to pave this and that way we can control some of the water, some of the material that's coming out on the Manhattan Beach Boulevard and the material just being washes from the gravel. This can then get directed down into the ditch area and they would continue the use that they have been maintaining for a number of years. This, this also kinda came up in 2010 when the Rokas got a variance on the property to do some improvements on their home. One of the reasons that we're limited in space is the septic system on Lot 1 is interfering. So that this Arlington Beach Road area has been used, like I said, for a number of years. So it's a short drop, but it does carry a little bit of, of grade to it, about 12%. It's gravel. The only thing they're asking for is to be able to pave this area so that we can control some of that water and, like I say, get away from some of the erosion issues of that driveway. Mr. Roca is here and I think he'd like to speak just a little bit on some of the history on that and he can do the better job than I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it's, it's like Kevin said. I think this driveway's probably been the same way for 80 years. We've owned the, the place since 2008. And, you know, in 2010, we brought in some stuff to stop the runoff and it just keeps getting worse. So you can't, I can't plow anymore because the ridges are deep and, and even this most recent rainstorm that we finally got, I went out and took pictures and, so I just think it's a smart thing to do to, to pave it and stop the runoff. And I'm not changing the road, we're not.
And I'm not changing the road, we're not changing anything that hasn't been that way for, probably since nineteen forty. So, that's a request and I appreciate the opportunity. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chair, this went to the Park Department, um, a little over a week ago, I believe it was. They did agree to move this forward to the council.
Hmm, okay.
Can I ask you a question about your septic system?
Yeah.
You got the house and the sewer tanks are in the front?
Yeah, so the, the, it's really a mess. Really what happens is the septic goes out the back towards the lakeside, makes a ninety-degree turn to the right.
Yeah.
And then runs all the way down that entire length of the driveway and the drain field is on the roadside.
So.
So I can't, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, if that drain field fails, where's the next one gonna go? If you're gonna blacktop everything? You, you're required to have a alternate or a backup today?
So, don't know the answer to that. Did, and am in consultation with Rob Abar to possibly reroute that line to the existing septic tank and field that's left over from the property I purchased from Ruth Mojenas. So I own the adjacent property. That has a working and active septic system. So as recently as today, Mr. Rob Abar was out to the property and I said, if I wanted to reroute, could I do that into the leftover septic system and drain field from the former property? And he said, absolutely, that's an option, dah 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 dah. I said, well, let me go to the, let me go to the meeting this evening and see if, if we're really gonna move forward on that. And I can, full disclosure here, it's in my interest, if that approval is granted, that I would probably tap into that former septic and drain field to minimize the risk of a deep freeze and, and my septic line freezing.
So then you're really asking two things. You're asking for the driveway to blacktop and the driveway and to reroute your sewer system to your other property, other side of our, our property?
Okay, so.
Is that kind of the, and that's, I'm just.
No, no, and, and so I'm just being one hundred percent transparent here. I don't know if I'm actually asking for that or if I have to ask for it. What I'm trying to do is be prudent and say, okay, if I get permission to asphalt this and my septic line is currently running under it, am I taking a risk for increased freezing? One. If I am taking that risk, are there other options that I can consider? So, I don't know if I'm asking for that permission tonight, I'm not asking for it if that's a requirement by this.
No, it's, it's not.
Yeah.
The reason I threw it out is I just think it's prudent on your, to be thinking about that.
Yeah.
Because you are right, you're risking that fro- frost going down a little deeper in your driveway and you don't want the problem with your drain field or your, your pipes freezing. You have the other property available and is it time for you then to ask for both things or just to get the driveway today and worry about the other later? So that's, I'm just bringing it up.
Yep, no, I appreciate it, Mr. Ray. It's the same point I thought of, so, um, you know, I have, so formerly we had Justin Norrington of Cabin Care doing all of our maintenance and at that point, he did run a heat line down the existing line. Before I even went down this road, I asked him, what risk am I taking? And he said, yeah, it might be okay, it might not. Everyone's gonna have a subjective opinion on it. You know, what I don't wanna do, to your point, is get permission and all of a sudden tear up an asphalt driveway. That's not gonna happen. So, I respectfully suggest I would consider that, cause it's in my best interest, but I would, you know, as long as it's permissible to do that, you know, for, if I can do that and, and.
Is that adjacent much you have? Is that a buildable lot?
Well, I'll answer it this way. I, I, it must be because it had a double-wide mobile home on it prior.
So if you were gonna consider moving your septic to that lot, in the future, there could be another house and another septic there? I mean, right?
Yeah, so the comment, again, and I'm just trying to be honest here and I'm going off conversation today. The question that Rob Abar asked me, if you run that septic off your current house to the former one, yeah, you're not, you're limiting what you could do development-wise in the future. And my answer to him was, don't care, have zero aspirations of doing anything at all to the structure. So, uh, that's how I would answer that, if that answers the question. I guess it's a buildable lot, but it ain't gonna be buildable by me. I'm not planning to do any, which is why it's an easy decision for me, if permissible. It's just a workaround solution and I'm neither here nor there.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming there's a, a usable, uh, system on that lot.
Yeah, I, yeah, so I would have to have it inspected and make sure.
For sure, okay.
Yep, yeah, and it's usable because it was only this past year that we had the, the mobile home removed.
Okay.
So, yeah, definitely usable and I saw that Honey Wagon was just there, uh, cause they leave a nice date on the, on the cap. It's been inspected by Honey Wagon with, well, I shouldn't say the term inspected. It was emptied two years ago.
What is structure number four? Is that a garage building?
If that's nearest the road, that is, so, we have the mobile home removed, there is a single stall garage that is on that property that the former owner used and I, I left it cause the structure is good and I actually parked my vehicle in there. Mike, you're probably familiar with it, you've seen it many times. So I think that's what you're referring to is the garage.
Yeah.
Legacy garage.
I guess the thing I'm struggling with is, you know, once this is all blacktopped, then the next step is for you to come in and ask to have it vacated and, and then everyone says, well, you know, he's already got it blacktopped and he's, now he's got his sewer run over to the other lot and, you know, it's one more access to the lake that gets vacated, which, it, I'm not saying it wouldn't make sense at that point, but I'm kinda struggling with, you know, do people come down here now, you know, to go to the top of the bluff and look out or?
Right.
You know, and by the time you blacktop it, you know, then it really looks like, am I going down somebody's driveway to take a look at the lake and?
Right.
I'm just throwing this out and I, I probably shouldn't because there's a committee that's working on these accesses, but to me, it would make more sense if you were to get permission to blacktop this if it were considered to, and you'd have to move, you know, drain field in that garage to, and the city did it to, to one, I don't know, last spring where, you know, they vacated one and created another one on the other side of the lot. And I know your garage is there and part of your drain field would be there, but that would consolidate your property and then you could blacktop and, you know, redo your drain field, you know, right across from your main house or? I'm sort of rambling here, but I'm, I'm struggling with having that whole area blacktopped and at that point, it's kinda like, well, you know, we're, we're so far down the road now, we can't do anything but vacate it.
And, and we do understand that, that, that's absolutely, but blacktop isn't gonna change anything of its existing use that's been there for a considerable amount of time. I know it does give the appearance of improvement. Um, but I think we are looking forward to what happens with the road vacations and what you're just mentioning, the possibility of changing those two areas. Is anyone using it right now? Um, I, I think people could, uh, talk about that, but right now, there is no view to that lake. Uh, you can't see the lake from the top of any of those portions. The trees are that big. Uh, we've got photos of that. So, I did really wanna get down the road vacation portion of this. I understand the situation and the consideration, but really what we are merely asking is the use of the blacktop over the existing gravel driveway, the terms and use of those that are set forward by Mr. Persons in his use, uh, agreement, um, call for the, the city can always have it removed. Um, so I think that's the portion that gives you solace that you still have control of this area and yet the Rokas are still maintaining the use that they've had, uh, for many, many years. So hopefully that helps. And then even if that were to be a paved walkway down to a viewing corridor, uh, the trees were removed and that type of thing, the ability to directional bore underneath, uh, any pavement, whether it's Mr. Roca's or the city's, is always there. Uh, I've done it at my own, uh, property now too. So, and that wouldn't disturb the pavement or cause it to be cut open again. So I hope that helps.
And then I would just add to, to your point, I, you know, I wanna do this cause it's the right thing to do. I understand the other implications, but if it comes to the point that I'm resetting up septic systems in a completely different place just to accommodate asphalting a road, I can only imagine that's a significant expense that I probably would just step back and say, you know what? I'll, I've been driving on a dirt road driveway for that long. We can let the runoff continue, I'm just trying to do the right thing. And then I do wanna speak because I, it's important that this be heard to this group. There is no practical use for this easement, zero. And anyone who tells you that they're using this easement to view the lake or to watch fireworks or to have these meditative moments, I would suggest is blatantly false. I've been there, no one is doing this, and I know this is off the path and I know Mr. McCormick said we didn't wanna go there, but this needs to be said and documented. You have some people that have disgruntled opinions who in the past had access to the lake through the former generosity of, of the former owner, which for obvious reasons, I could not grant, not the least of which is insurance. But if the discussion is on practicality, that's, that's not a discussion. So, anyway, I appreciate the opportunity, I've taken up too much time. Um, that's, that's exactly what we're asking for is, is, is permission to do the right thing on this, eliminate the runoff, not changing anything. Your points are well taken on the, on the septic and what I may do to that. What I probably won't do is totally move the, the field, so. That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
I'm kinda coming in at the eleventh hour. I don't know everything about this, but have you talked about moving the right-of-way to the other side of that lot? Has that been part of anything?
That's what I was just raising, the issue of.
We are to that position, yeah. We're, we're on an old, that activity with the, uh, meeting, uh, not formulating anything, yeah.
I mean, I don't know the landscape there, but that sure would give him a nice lot with all kinds of room for septic and driveway and all kinds of stuff. I don't know.
We have done that.
But that's not what's in front of the commission. And they need to address that.
I think that's, we have, I, my only point is I know the septic on that edge of the property is right up against, sorry, sorry. Okay, the, and again, I, and my only observation on that is on that edge of the property, that septic butts up real close to my neighbor's property. So I, I don't know, I don't, I'm not an expert. I just know it was out there today and it's super close. I think you probably see that too. Anyway, that's how I would answer that.
Do you wanna speak?
Give your name.
My name is Harold Haas. I live on twelve, one, four, three Manhattan Point Boulevard. I've known Mike a number of years and what I say, I don't wanna hurt Mike or his attorney. But what I don't wanna see up in our area there is a lot of blacktop being put down. And I watched that property, I've been up there twenty years, and one time somebody planted a row of trees in there, in, on that easement and they all died. And, uh, I remember when they restored that shed or, there was that little shed there they had to rebuild. Then they put in a brand-new drain field. I think that was before Mike bought it. And I'd just like to see the area left natural at this point and this, um, cause we start doing this on one, then the people that have blacktop areas, they wanna blacktop them and then you're gonna have to give in to that. Uh, I agree that there's no other place for Mike's driveway but right where it is and I'm sure when he bought the property, he knew the driveway was on the easement. Uh, I used to park my boat over there when I knew Ruth. I mowed the lawns over there and, uh, I just think it's unfair to pour this blacktopping in there. Uh, there must be another way to keep the blacktop down so everything goes in the ground, not, not drain down to the street. I haven't seen any big water rushes down that driveway and I've been there a long, long time. Uh, so I, I don't wanna hurt Mike, but, uh, I feel that if the city has rules, Cavali, Mr. Cavali made some rules as well and I think those should be followed. Thank you.
So, John, I'm gonna ask you a question here. We have, um, impervious limits and twenty-five percent means that you have to do water?
Fifteen percent.
Is it fifteen? So, right now, I don't know if, we've talked about this, does the city own the right-of-way? Who owns the right-of-way? And then the question, I'll get right to it, is it looks like we're gonna be blacktopping over half of the right-of-way. So, I mean, is that right to do? That we just sit here and allow the right-of-way to get covered up, you know?
So the, the correct answer is the impervious limit on any residential piece of property is twenty-five percent. The city doesn't have fee title ownership to this piece of property. They're, it is held in trust by the city to maintain and manage. And the problem that you have is it encompasses the whole right-of-way, not just that twenty-foot space in between the two lots. Someone had asked the question earlier about can you move it over? Um, the, the other question I heard asked was, is, is this a buildable lot? We don't have buildable or unbuildable lots. We have lots that you can build on if you can meet all the setbacks. So right now, Mr. Roca owns two lots that have a building envelope on each one. He could build two homes there. If he was to move this over to the east or the west, um, and, and say, we're gonna, we wanna, we'd like the city to abandon, vacate the middle one, but we wanna move it over to the other side of the property, he would effectively then remove the ability to build two homes on this property. It would be one lot to build one home on and that is it. That's not the question that's asked. The question that's being asked is, are you gonna allow him a use agreement to blacktop the section of the driveway that is already an impervious surface? To me, there's no difference between blacktop and the gravel that he has in place there. I don't count it any differently on either side. Um, I certainly think that Mr. Roca needs to know that if he does need to put a new septic system in and he does need to cross the right-of-way right now, he will be back here in front of this body asking for another use agreement. I will not issue you a permit until you have that in hand. So please keep that in mind. Um, anything else you would wanna do with a, a different septic system on the existing lot that's on the, on the west side there? You would be required to get a variance, is my guess, even to replace the tanks that are in front cause they're too close to the bluff. So you got a lot of challenges on this lot. It might be best I, to come back and ask for, to move the right-of-way versus what you're trying to do right now. I think that would solve more of your problems than anything. I think you would've found that out in the, in the process that we're working at, that that might be the best route to go anyway, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for a recommendation to the city council regarding this, uh, this matter. Ready for a motion?
I'm gonna abstain from this vote. Mike is my neighbor. I don't think it's appropriate for me to speak one way or the other.
Okay. I guess I see this as an erosion problem. Blacktopping may solve. The septic system is another question like John just brought up. But I'm just, disagreement that's been put together by attorney, I guess I would make a motion to agree with that to the city council. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion is second. Home favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Two to nothing, basically.
So, your motion is to approve the request and move it to council. Is that what I heard?
Mm-hmm, that's what it is.
Next item is Ted's going to give an update on a wastewater treatment plant.
Mr. Chairman, council. We just got through a very, very busy summer, very high flows. We treated a lot of wastewater. We should be very proud of what our plant did. It is of exceptional quality. It has performed outstanding, and it's due to the efforts of the operators and the staff and everybody being on top of what they're supposed to be doing. It's working well. With that, we, last week, we had a open house for, you know, we're bidding a project for some remodeling of our clarifiers. That would, the work would be done this winter. We had an open house last week. I can tell you there are five major plant holders right now as far as general contractors. Four of them showed up at the site, and there's two major electrical contractors, and both of them were there. So, that was good to see. We weren't sure how many we're going to show. This is going to be opened up on the 13th. The bid will be due. It's virtual, so anybody wants to see it, it'll be, so, and then as soon as we get the information, we'll pass it back on to Public Works and then the council for further action. Again, we don't know where prices of things are. I know that was a lot of questions that the general contractors had. Fiberglass of all things is in short supply. The fiberglass wiers in the tanks is in short supply. They asked for an alternative, and they want to weld them on a stainless steel. We didn't have an objective of that, so that's one of the addendums to the part of this process. But we should, I think we're going to have a good, with that many bidders, we should have a good project, and we'll see how that goes. But again, the treatment plant is working well. We're getting into fall. We're going to start shutting part of the plant down. We'll be doing cleaning of our, the collection system in the very near future here. But like I said, everything has worked well this summer, so.
When are the bids due back, Ted?
Thirteenth.
Of this month, next week?
Yep, next week.
So, the bids will be in before the council meeting?
No.
Well, I guess so.
Yep. The day of, so. Hopefully, the engine can turn around. I don't know. That's all I had as far as the update on the treatment plant, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And other business, we had something about a sewer bill?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, Shar got a letter from Mr. McCullough, Paul McCullough. One of the properties he owns is this Lake Place Realty building, just kind of kitty corner over here, this logged, bold list building. I guess his sprinkler system was still hooked up to the water meter, and the water system failed. He told me he just about flooded up the brewery with the water amount of water. His normal bill is something about $104 a month. He had one bill of $208, one bill of $260. So, all of that, well, basically, that water was just going out of his yard. It didn't go down the sewer system. He's looking for a credit on his bill. That's kind of where it's at.
So, what do you suggest?
I could, I could live with this. I mean, this is, I mean, legitimately, the water didn't go down the sewer. We did not pay to treat the water. He paid to pump it. We didn't pay to treat the water. It was on his yard, so. He has a very consistent record of that, his water usage in his water bill. So, I could, I could live with this if the.
So, it was connected to the meter, but now he's replanted so that it's.
It should be taken out before the sprinkler should, all your sprinklers should be, because it is something that goes on the yard. You shouldn't have that going through your water meter. You should have, be taking that water out beforehand.
That's been since.
That's what he told me. I haven't witnessed it, but that's what he told me.
Okay.
So, basically, the city never, never treated that water. We shouldn't make him pay for it.
That's what his contention is.
He wasted water, but we can make him pay for that, I guess.
Ted, I think the difference should be 220, not 260, if you do the math.
I had, didn't, I never even looked in the math. I just went by his letter here, so we could do a correction to that if it's sold.
Yeah. It's 260.
Is it 260? Shar just did it. She says it is 260, so.
If there'd be two fours.
But his, his bill is normally 104 a month.
He has an apartment building.
Yeah.
He pays 52 for one and 52 then for the other, and it's always consistent, his bill.
And is the sprinkler system new?
No, something failed in his system, and he was not aware that it was still hooked up that way.
But it just seems to me it's been hooked up that way for five years or something.
It's, well, and I don't remember, I don't know when it was hooked up. I haven't paid attention to green grass there, I guess.
Well, if you're okay with it, I'll make a motion. We refund $260 to Mr. McCullough.
I'll second it.
Motion to the council, recommend the council that they refund $260 for use of water that never made it to the sewer system. All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I have one more little one here. Shar reminded me that we've been selling a lot of plots out at our cemetery. And we have land that we purchased long, long ago, but we never plotted the property. We're getting to the point where access to the, some new lots is going to be needed in the future. So, at some time, we got to put some money into surveying and plotting out the new land. We asked Bolton and Mink to give us a quote. Survey work at the cemetery is about $11,000. Engineering developed the large plan and turf establishment at about $5,000. And the, the aggregate turf length is about 37,500. So, if we want to just go through and get the plotting done today, that's about $11,000. But we'd have to put that into this year's operating budget to do that for next year.
Put it in the 2021 budget or next year's?
Budget for next year is what I meant. I'm not saying that we have to do the turf establishment and do the, all the engineering, but if we could get the survey work done and get it plotted, we could be working on, the staff could even be working on getting the grass and start setting up the roads in our free time, so.
So, for $11,000, they'll lay out the roads and they'll put pins at the corners of each plot?
That's survey work to plot cemetery parcels.
Is that correct?
That's what I understand, yeah.
Okay.
How many, how many plots would that provide, you know?
It's a big.
It's a big, it's, it's, it's over five acres that we'd be plotting out, so.
Didn't that come to council this year? The same request, come to council?
We put money in the budget, and we, it got dropped in last year's budget as far as plotting out the cemetery.
I think last year, we put $50,000 in, and that got taken out of the budget.
But it has been topic of discussion, so then we asked Bolton and Mink, because we are legitimately, we're selling ourselves out.
But I think if, you know, if we went forward and did this, you know, as long as you guys are well aware of where the pins are, then maybe the staff can put the gravel roads in and.
That's what we would plan on doing.
I just got to express a concern of mine about it, is if we do that, then I would assume if the lots were available, you'd sell them over there without the front half being full?
I would, I would caution the council not to sell them. Let's get it plotted, and let's continue to get the rest of our cemetery filled up first. And then at some point, the council can, we can make a recommendation. You know, we get down to the last 10, 15% of the lots. We come to Shar and I come to council and say, okay, we need to open up the next. By that time, we should have it, the grass established and.
When they put pins in, they're metal pins, so you go out there with a metal detector.
That's how we find them today.
Okay.
There's actually a, on the, of every, you know, there's lot and blocks.
Yep.
And they're four foot six by 10 foot, the lots are, so four foot six wide, 10 feet long. And then there'd be a walkway with your four feet, and then you go another block. And then there'd be a service road that's 10 feet, and then you go another lot and block. And then on the corners of these lots and blocks, we got this big map that shows us it's Lot 22, Block 5. And you can go to the, be able to go onto the grid and take and find the corner marker. And there's this big aluminum pin with a steel pin in the bottom, or steel rod in the bottom of it. And you can find those and then locate where you're at. That's how we identify where we're at.
Okay. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I just, you know, once we start doing that, what are we doing for maintenance on that five acres now, just running a flail mower over it?
We're keeping it mowed. Remember, we, Ron Hopkins donated some trees. They've grown, they've been pretty established. They're coming. But basically, we've just letting it get growing, because remember somebody, the purpose, we bought the property from, they stripped all the topsoil off.
Yep.
So, we brought some topsoil in. We've tried to get that built back up, so there's something there, and just sugar sand out there.
Wasn't there some talk about when you, when you lay out that, wasn't there going to be like a concrete strip where headstones goes?
We talked about something like that, but it's never came to any further than talk.
Would, would that be included in what we're doing now? And does that have to be, does Bolton and Mink need to make an allowance for, I don't know what it is, a two-foot concrete pad or?
If that's the way that the council wants to go, that would be fine, but that would be direct, further direction to the.
I'm not saying that's the way it is. I just remember that, that that's what was being proposed years ago when we laid it out, that the way cemeteries do it now, you know, you run this concrete strip down there, and that's what headstones go on, so you're not, I don't know. I guess then, as far as mowing and maintenance and stuff, you know, you're running alongside that. You're not trying to go around headstones and all the other things, but.
And we could consider that as part of the, what to move forward, but I've got concerns on, how do you take this long?
Without a crack.
Strip without breaking and being just a crumbly mess. You know, right now, the each headstone has a, basically a concrete or granite base, a footing. And then the headstone is either glued or screwed to that base, and.
I think the other.
They shift and move all the time on that frost, so.
The other thing we, we talked about, you know, it's up to this council as it gets developed, but that that new section would, would only allow flat headstones.
That was one of the topics of this discussion to bring up with the council, is we just say everything is flat and there's no more.
Maintenance standpoint, you're not trying to weed whip around and run mowers around headstones. It's just.
I know. My folks are at Fort Snelling, and they tried that, too, but it seemed like it failed because they went back to the, I mean, there's just a huge difference when you're.
Yeah.
You've got some.
Russell rolled it up.
Yeah, it's all, it kind of, and, you know, then you got to run around and try to figure out, yeah. I don't know, it's.
I guess surveying is the first step.
Okay, so, is that a recommendation to the city council then?
I would, I would like the recommendation to include it in this year's, in next year's budget.
$11,000?
Yes.
Okay. Motion on that?
I'll make a motion, but I have some other things related to the budget, too. I'll make a motion. We recommend $11,000 for the initial surveying of the cemetery additional area.
Yeah, okay.
I'll say.
Motion is second. Recommend it to the city council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Nope, nope, nope. I still got, I still got other business. I always have to have other business. I asked this last year, and I think it changed, but are you going to the end of next year?
My?
Yeah.
I really don't want to share my, my schedule right now.
Okay. The only reason I'm, I'm asking is I spent a couple hours looking at the budget this morning, and if we were to, or if, if you were to be leaving at the end of next year, there's nothing in the budget for a replacement that probably should come on a month or two before you leave. The other question, you know, I'm getting personal here, and I don't mean to, but, you know, right now, it's your license that's running the plant. Is there, if you were to leave, is there anyone on staff that's capable of taking over, getting the license?
Under, under the rules and regulations that the state of Minnesota has, Nate has his two licenses that he needs to operate the plant.
He has a Class B license?
He has a Class B license, and he has his Type 4 disposal license today.
All right. And then another thing I noticed in the budget, there's $100,000 for biosolids. I guess that, that'll be discussed at the council level. Or, no, it's a million dollars for biosolids. That's what, I knew there was a one and a bunch of zeros, a million dollars. I thought the council was putting that off.
I just want the council to be aware of this.
Okay.
They were, right now, we're relying on Pine River. I have had some discussion with other people. Pine River is actually looking at scrapping out their whole treatment plant, going to a pond system. And there will be no more Pine River sanitary treatment plant. They will have a big pond system, and they will be going to spray irrigation and be spraying it on fields. If that moves forward, I just want everybody to be aware, we'd lose our biosolids. It's not tomorrow, but I just want to be everybody aware that you're going to have to sometime step up and address biosolids.
Okay. And then my, my other question is, a rate increase on the sewer bills. There's been no discussion of that. I noticed the revenues on the budget jumped for operating or user fees. And I don't know if that's based on there's more connections or, or what, but I think last year, we raised it $2, and then when we got to the budget meetings, you know, we kind of wished we would have raised it more, and I'm, I'm just questioning, you know, should this commission, based on your recommendation, be recommending that they look at a rate increase so you can plug that into the budget?
It's a discussion I have not had with Mike yet. Truthfully, I have not. I just have not had time to do it. But he's saying it has to go up.
That was kind of my thought in looking at the sewer revenues and expenditures, because it, it ends up getting subsidized out of the general fund at the end of the year for whatever the loss is. whatever the loss is. So I'm not sure, I mean, your, your next budget meeting is day after tomorrow, so I don't know if you should have a recommendation from staff on...
Did we have an increase last year? Remember, remember when?
Yeah, we had a $2 increase last year.
So that carried, that was just for this year?
I think Shar has a sheet that shows every year we've done a raise or that. Someplace you and I were looking at that. And I should bring that to the budget meeting with a recommendation. And I'll get with Mike and work on that.
That was it for me.
Okay. You can make a motion adjourned.
I'll make a motion. Public Works adjourned.
I'll second it.
Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I need a motion for the council to adjourn.
I'm voting to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.